And to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item five is informational reports. We have some planning and zoning minutes included from the January 4th meeting. We also have a proclamation for Julie Moore Peterson, a longtime employee of the city of Sturgis. And I do, I get, I'm gonna be out of town during this on the 28th, so I'll read this for the record here. I brought my light because he's bad, bad paperwork to see on. Whereas Julie Moore Peterson began her library career as a circulation librarian in October of 1985, moving to assistant director in 1987 and director in 2004. Whereas Julie coordinated the original digitalization and automation of library records for the Sturgis Public Library. And whereas Julie was built, was a building project member for the community center which opened in 1992 and the library city hall remodel in 2006. And whereas the library expanded services in Ameeh County with a small branch library and union center and community drop off services in Somerset under Julie's supervision. And whereas Julie was instrumental in the Black Hills Library Consortium with expanded accessibility to library services to residents throughout the Black Hills. And whereas Julie partners with the Sturgis Area Art Council and is a former board member for the South Dakota Humanities Council, where she received the distinguished achievement in humanities award in 2019. Whereas Julie assisted with securing funding to establish an endowment for the library in memory of Albert Laverne Elliott in 2019, dedicating the remodeled children's library and the expansion of the library's programming space. And whereas Julie established the Sturgis Public Library as a local venue for artists to exhibit their works in a deserving and public manner. Now therefore, I, Mark Carstensen, the mayor of the city of Sturgis, do hereby proudly proclaim Friday, January 28th, 2022 as Julie Moore Peterson Day. So certainly well deserved and helped shape our town in many generations. So Julie, we appreciate you. Item six is announcements and praise. Want to take a moment and pray if you want to join me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the ability to come to a meeting and openly pray to you. We thank you for all of our blessings. We pray that we understand that your blood on the cross gives us the ability to wear your robe of righteousness and that we live that way and lean into you. We thank you for your sacrifice on the cross and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I've got a couple handwritten notes here. Um, we do, we're gonna do a card shower for Julie. Uh, so if you want to drop off a card in appreciation, she'll get them all at once. And then also at the end of this month, uh, for the election process for the municipal government of the city of Sturgis petitions are available starting on the 28th. And they are due back on the 25th of February. Those are Fridays, um, which does affect city hall operations. Um, on those days we are open. All day Friday, we'll do some split shifts to make the finance office open. But that's Friday, the 28th and they're due this, the 25th of February. Does council have anything to add for announcements and praise? Counselors update. Um, usually I speak with people after, it's always done on the second meet, second regular meeting of the month. Uh, we've implemented this throughout the years. We had it off for a while and now it's back on, but I think it's a point in time where he gives the opportunity for different council members to take the microphone and speak on whatever they want for a brief amount of time. So um, with this one, I was ill planned and I planned on speaking myself anyway. So I took this one. I think it's important, some statements that I wanted to make or some uh, messages I wanted to send. With everything that's going on in our community, um, when you look back on where we were once at, I, I think we should be proud where we're at. I think, uh, over the years, I've been a part of many different city councils. I've worked with many different partnerships of organizations. It's never been easy, but I think the end goal is always to make our town better. And I think we've achieved that the vast majority of times. Um, I think in light of the petition that's, uh, been brought forward to the city, I think it's important to state that this council has had active discussions on how can we make what we're doing better? And that, uh, is something that we're gonna take to further levels in the near future, I believe. I don't want to talk entirely about it at this point in time, but this council has made the concerted effort to make a better roadmap for where we go in the future. That includes possibly and probably updating the comprehensive plan, which was, I think, completed in 20, 2009, maybe 2010 originally, but I believe it was 2009. Um, but it's a long-term plan that kind of lays out the vision of our community. There'll be multiple public hearings in that process to hear from people and to help shape the vision. Um, if it's in the comprehensive plan, it doesn't mean it has to be done, but it does have to. It's a, it's a globration. It's a brainstorming session and it's, it's, it's how we make our town better and kind of a roadmap to get there. So as we move forward in time here in the near future, that is something that this council will discuss more and work on, along with other ways to reshape and to define and to I guess, put in code and ordinance, certain things that the city is trying to achieve, which I think we've come a long ways in the last 12 years that I, I've seen personally been involved. But I think the chance to get better is here now and we can do that together. So I just look forward to it. I think council is a unique situation being part-time elected officials as far as what we're considered. Um, I think most people up here would say it'd be great if we did part-time, but it's not, it's not, it's a labor of love. It's because we care about our community and that's what we're doing it for. So I just appreciate everybody up here and appreciate the public and welcome comments and questions, concerns, one-on-one, throughout different public meetings that we're gonna be having. And I just open the line and make sure that it's understood that the line of communication is there. We do want to make our town better. We already have a great town, but we all have work to do. So it's a good thing. And I'll leave it at that on the counselor's update. Brings us to item eight, which is city manager's report. And Daniel's got some good information in here for what we've been doing. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Ainsley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, included, uh, for tonight's meeting, we do have our December 2021 key performance index report. Uh, that's been attached. If anyone has any questions as they're reviewing it, feel free to let me know. In addition, uh, we do have the sales tax update. Um, there's a little more lengthy, um, explanation than what we've done in the past. Um, under that sales tax update, the reason why is after talking to a couple of residents, they had some questions about how sales tax works. And so wanted to make sure that that was included in there so that people could understand that. Um, but I think the important message behind that is that, um, 2021 was a fantastic year. If you look at the general 2% sales tax, um, for the month of November, uh, sales were up 14.1%. The November of 2020, uh, which November of 2020 was actually our, our highest November ever. And so it's fantastic to see. Um, and for the, um, 11 months of 2021, January through November, sales were up 13.5%. So, um, it's been a very good year. And then the tourism tax, uh, November's sales were actually just phenomenal. Uh, if you look at that, uh, November of 2021 compared to November of 2020, uh, sales were 54.7% higher. And for the January through November period, sales were up 28.6%. Um, so, uh, tourism has been very, uh, very significant all year long, um, along with all the other sales. And then that's going to lead to another item that's later on in your agenda. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel. Item nine is consent calendar. We have actually one, two, three, four items of action. If you got the early one from posted late last week, there's a duplicate of 9.2 and 9.3. Um, they're both setting the public hearing for GRB enterprises, but the newest one is corrected, but the, if you got the older one, it does have a duplicate. Does council wish to remove any of the items under consent calendar and discuss them individually? How about anybody in the public consent calendar items?
Move to approve.
We got a first by Jason to approve.
Second.
Have a second by Dave. Any last discussion? We do have two council members participating via phone call today, so I'll start with them. Dean, I'll start with you on the consent calendar roll call vote. Becca? Jason?
Yes.
Aaron? I'm yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Mike? Consent calendar passes unanimously. Item 10 is claims. Any discussion on the claims included in this meeting? Public or council?
I think it might be good to have an explanation. Uh, I can, I don't know what page it's on. I should have written it down, but it's on other. And it's the TIF number 21 Hidden Estates. The Wilson Contracting LLC Crossing a Border Station. It's a substantial amount of money. It's $738,028. So I just thought maybe an explanation on that might be appropriate.
I'll swing in. If I'm wrong, tell me Daniel or Rick, but I believe that's the boring that occurred for the water line underneath the interstate to connect the water line all the way up to the top to the development. And it's in process.
Pretty good. That's what I thought. But that, but it's that, that amount of money, everybody should really know for sure.
Three quarters of a million dollars. Right. Big bucks for sure, but amazing stuff that's done and certainly gonna be well used. Any other discussion on the claims? Public or council? Is there a motion?
I move to approve claims.
Got a first by Dave?
Second.
Second by Angela. Any last discussion? We'll go ahead and roll call claims. Mike, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
I'm yes. Aaron?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Dean? And Becca? Bills are paid. Item 11 is reports. 11 dash, 11.1 is second reading of Title 15. Mr. Miller has been working on these and been working on staff reports through here. So I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The the sidewalk ordinance, the ultimate purpose is to reflect 2020, uh, state legislative changes, to update on the sidewalk statutes. And from the first reading, we made some revisions, primarily adding a, a provision that regulates discharge of, from buildings over sidewalks. And the purpose of that is to protect the sidewalks and prevent ice from forming onto the sidewalks. Uh, from the first to second reading, there were no proposed revisions. So the city recommends adopting the attached ordinance.
Any questions for Eric? As stated, there are no changes from first to second reading. Every ordinance certainly has plenty of meat on the bone. And I think part of this process that we're trying to help clean up and go through is to help make sure there's not cross-references or misrepresentations between different ordinances and things like that, specific with state law and our own codified law. How about public discussion on the second reading of Title 15?
I guess I would move to approve Title 15.05, second reading.
Got a first by Dave? A second by Dean? One last try for discussion on the second reading here. None being heard? We'll go ahead. Let's, oh, let's roll call this again, just for clarity on the votes. I'll go ahead and go first. I'm yes. Aaron?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Dean? Becca?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
That'll be published in the official newspaper, the city of Sturgis. 20 days after that publication, if there's no action referred by the public, that'll go into effect, uh, for a new ordinance for the city of Sturgis. 11.2 is also a second reading. This is one vast chapter of Title 18 and just part of it, but Mr. Miller, I'll turn it back over to you.
Uh, this ordinance is focused on, uh, mobile food vendors and providing a means for them to operate within the city. Uh, the primary changes between the, or with the first revision was changing the timeframe to being able to operate from 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM Monday, all, or all seven days of the week. Um, the, there were no proposed revisions between the first and second reading. The city recommends approving the ordinance.
I have a question. How did we disseminate this information to the food vendors, to the mobile food vendors that we have currently? I know we don't do much in the wintertime, but we have quite a few in the summertime. And they're the ones that are gonna be affected by this. Should we have sent them notice of a change in the, uh, uh, in the, in the ordinance?
I believe a lot of the food vendors that we, that you see throughout the city during the season that they're out and about are with city or city partnership events. So I believe there's been some discussions over the years of how it all works. And and I guess the specific one, I don't even know how long ago now, what was it, two years ago, Mike, when we had the meeting in the community center and that was brought up by some folks that were looking at doing one. Um, I, I don't think they came back forward through Dave's office or anything at this point in time. He'd put you on the spot, Smith, but come on up, please.
Since this discussion has all began, I've had several applications, uh, for existing temporary food vendors or food trucks that have been here in the past couple of years applying for the temporary structure permit is how we permitted them before. And I've explained to all of those folks as well as now to some of the other existing ones that are going to be reapplying that this is changing and then once it's done, I will contact them and let them know. So they are, at least all the ones that have in the past been licensed or somewhat, some type of license with the city have been notified of the change or the upcoming change.
Is your warranty out, Dave?
I, I'm embarrassed. I'm embarrassed.
Do you have any questions for me?
Thanks, Dave.
Alright, you're welcome.
Does that answer it, Mike? Does that?
Yeah, kind of.
Yep.
I know that we have quite a few show up just, you know, a month or so before the rally and a month or so after the rally. And they're kind of opportunistic for our summer events, but, uh, I don't think, I, I don't know of anybody that's gonna complain, but they, they will.
Any other discussion on second reading? Public or council? Or staff?
Mr. Mayor, uh, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the second reading of the mobile food vendors ordinance.
First by Kevin?
I'll second.
Second by Aaron. Any last discussion? We'll go ahead and roll call again, just for clarity. I'm a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Becca? Dean? Jason?
Yes.
And Aaron?
Yes.
Second reading is passed. Same process for all ordinances on that. Brings us to, thanks, Mr. Miller. Brings us to item 11.3. This is the first supplemental appropriation for the 2022 budget. Some people might say it's a little early for a supplement to the 2022 budget. I think it's an exciting thing. Um, we go through the budgetary process starting in May or June. Well, department had started earlier, but around there. Um, as we plan for the upcoming year, there's a, in, we can't foresee all things and in the process, we quite often take a conservative approach. And in the past, we've been lucky and do have surpluses, but we've chose to put those in savings and build necessary reserves. Success over the years have put us to a spot where our reserves are well above the recommended, what they should be from the state was what the, from, uh, municipal league and other places. I'd say this is where you should be at to operate your city. Um, we're certainly above that. So Mr. Ainsley, I'll let you speak to the staff report on the extra money and what we plan to do with it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, it is projected that given the significant improvements that we've seen, uh, throughout our community, that in the, uh, general fund 2% sales tax that uh, we will finish 2021 with approximately $325,000 of additional funds that are over and above what we had budgeted, uh, for revenue. And also in the, um, the tourism sales tax, the triple B fund, about $94,000 higher than what we had budgeted. And then one other item that I think is important to note is, um, in our capital improvement fund, we have budgeted $170,000 for upgrades or for the city's portion of upgrades at the county's dispatch center. Uh, the county was, uh, very successful in getting a grant as well as also reducing the overall cost of that. And so the city share actually reduced to $70,000 instead of 170. So that also frees up another $100,000. So looking at all of that, the council was able to go through all of the various requests that have been made, um, over the past 18 months or so, uh, from different groups. And, uh, with that, there's a recommendation to, uh, make some supplemental appropriations so we can meet some of those, um, needs that have been brought up by, uh, residents as well as some of the departments. One, um, is $25,000 for some additional equipment on music, uh, for music on main as well as other community festivals, uh, so that there can be more activities that occur for um, probably some of the older, uh, children that, uh, participate in the event. Uh, for that, we plan on, uh, partnering with other community groups to help assist um, all of the activities that occur, uh, each music on main. But if the council approves this, then we'll unveil that plan in about a month. Um, and then $150,000 for street banner pole replacements. Our street banner poles have, uh, been up and operated for probably three decades or longer. Uh, they're showing some significant sign of wear and tear. Uh, so we would like to, uh, replace those as those are an important, uh, source of revenue for the community uh, during the motorcycle rally and other events, but they also add to the festive, uh, atmosphere, given that, um, we do have the funding available. It'd be wise to make that sort of investment now. Um, as well as $150,000 for some ADA upgrades. Um, that has been a long-term, um, item that has been on our capital improvement list for, um, several years. And each year we're able to make some improvements with $150,000. So there should be a lot of significant improvements that could be made, um, this year. So what the hope would be with that is that, uh, we would be able to make some recommendations to the Parks Board and then they would be able to review them and then forward those onto the council uh, for final considerations. So we can make those improvements this year, hopefully. And then with the $100,000 savings from the dispatch center, um, it's recommended that that would be used, um, for an indoor batting cage facility. Uh, we have been working with the, um, baseball as well as the softball associations. They have committed to, um, $80,000 to assist in constructing a new facility. Um, given that we have $100,000 of additional capital improvement funds, we would be able to actually make that request, be able to proceed. And then out of the, um, tourism tax, $20,000 for some additional, um, advertising for the Sturgis Motorcycle Rally. That would be matched by the State Department of Tourism. So that 20,000 would actually become 40,000. Um, and then a $50,000 grant to the rodeo club for the construction of their new rodeo facility. Um, we have already dedicated that we would assist as possible with some of the construction efforts. Um, we last were told that they are hiring an engineer, uh, to proceed with some plans so that they would be able to start, uh, working on getting that, um, produced. But, uh, this would be able to be a sizable donation, uh, towards actually getting that facility up and going, uh, which of course is a, a significant driver for, um, a lot of recreational needs kind of in our community. And then lastly, um, some additional equipment and also, uh, some studies for, uh, different events in our community, $24,000 for that. So that's some, uh, timing equipment that we would be using for Music on Main as well as the Legendary 5K and other things like that. And then also to do an economic impact study, uh, so that we would be able to use the results from that economic impact study, uh, to apply for further, uh, grants in the future. And again, just to note that this is all from additional, uh, revenue that goes above and beyond what was anticipated for 2021. So uh, this is not using money from your reserves and it's, uh, not increasing taxes, of course.
Any questions from council for Daniel? This has been talked about quite a bit and it's so many deserving situations, but I think we're covering some good ground here to make some improvements.
Do you have a creative accounting list there? How much money has actually been saved that you were talking about? Uh, I got about 240,000 that I got there.
The, from these, uh, projects, I think it's just under 525,000. I think it's 519, 519,000, um, that would come from this. And, um, in addition, there was other revenue, hopefully, um, that we'll see from last year that is still further or above and beyond what we had anticipated. But this is really from sales tax and also some savings from the, um, the county's dispatch.
Yep. Capital improvement. 100 of it's from 212. Capital improvement.
I saw it in the sheet, but I don't have it here.
Yeah, you got that first one probably, Mike. Yep. Procedurally, this is a supplement to our appropriation, our budget, which is a ordinance, which is, takes a first and second reading. We are at first reading. Is there discussion from the public or from council on proposed supplemental appropriation? Is there a motion? Bonnie, I didn't see you behind the computer there. What do you have, Bonnie? Come up, please, because so everybody could hear. Come on, you like it.
Well, I couldn't see the sheet from where I was and the numbers go kind of fast, but you just said 500 and some?
519 total.
Okay. And this is, this is coming from places we didn't expect? Or the places we expected are coming in more or?
So it's from the sales tax. 419,000 is from sales tax. So we usually anticipate a growth of about two or 3%, but as we are going over, we're double digits higher, um, than what we had in 2020, which 2020 was also double digits higher. And so there's been a significant increase. We don't budget for that much. And so our revenue is far higher than what we had anticipated. And then $100,000 from savings from the county being able to reduce the, the cost of the improvements at the dispatch center.
Okay. And then you said there'll be, surely there'll be more?
Yes.
From where? From how, for?
From rally sources as well as our, uh, construction permits were higher than what we had budgeted. All of that sort of thing. That will take some time still to close out. It'll probably be in March. Uh, when that's done.
There's still rally money that hasn't been?
No, 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 no. Rally money has been counted, but there's still outstanding bills and other things that need to go in before we can say finally at the end of the year, this is how much more.
It's left over from last year?
Correct. Yeah. And so we'll know that number mid-March or late March. Um, and that's not the audited number, but that's the number that is in the, the report that's sent to the state. Now this though, we're asking for these enhancements now because we know that this is above and beyond so that we can begin working on this so that the community can start seeing the benefits from this, hopefully this summer.
So can you give me a swag on kind of how much more there might be?
There's still, there's still sales tax. What, three more checks to come in?
Yeah, there's two more sales tax checks that'll be coming in, but then there's, there's still bills from 2021 that we're still paying. So we're not.
And there's still revenue that's coming in, um, from the state. Um, just there's still revenue coming in from the state that is back from 2021 that will be put back into 2021. So, um, there's what they call the liquor revision. It's off the liquor. That is coming in and then also some, uh, highway funds.
So in a few months, there will be a, the final number of what we believe we are over from what we budgeted for 2021, which would be the surplus as a whole, which we're gonna, if this passes first and second reading and doesn't get referred, there'll be 519,000 of that surplus number that will be committed, which we believe there will be a higher number than that 519 by what we're looking at currently.
Just sounds like a lot of money.
Without a doubt.
And I am always nervous about spending all we have, whether it's yours or mine or somebody else's. That just, you know, makes That just, you know, makes me uneasy and.
And with that opportunity, Bonnie, it truly is for years, we've not spent a penny of that. We've saved it back in the general fund for the reserves, but our reserves are millions and millions of dollars. And so to make these improvements that have been talked about, even first steps in some of these improvements, some of these projects are going to take millions of dollars over time. I mean, the ADA process is never ending, but to start and to, you know, work that forward and have the park board try to figure out where the best plan would be to start with this hundred and fifty thousand, it's great for our community. And it it's a good spot to be able to not put it in reserves and return it back to the citizens. So it's a it's a good thing. Go ahead, Aaron.
Just one thing to add on that, Bonnie, too, is, you know, when we start looking at our budget and what we think we're going to get received for revenue, you have to look at the environment you're in right now and what we think the environment's going to be. And we did this last time, we still had all the effects, you know, COVID and those impacts. So I think the, you know, granted, I wasn't part of council when they did this, but I I like the approach they took. You know, they kind of, they they took kind of a conservative number, what they thought they would at least be able to achieve in terms of revenue. And obviously, we we were lower than what we anticipated, we actually got more, but kind of hard to anticipate that with that environment. So to me, that seems pretty responsible on the city's part to kind of maintain a conservative number, what you think you're going to receive from revenue based on, you know, external events that may have an impact on us, may or may not, didn't have it, obviously didn't impact us nearly as much as we anticipated.
So I just, I mean, I ask the questions because I can't fill in the missing pieces. And I think we, not just me, but we out here in the room and in the universe, need to understand a little bit better what justifies it and why we feel confident about doing it. And so not objecting to anything, just sort of thought the the banner mounts were kind of out of the blue. But but yeah, you know, I understand that they need to be done, need to be kept up and have been there for a while. I just like to understand better and other people want to understand better as well, so thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie.
We we can go back and look at the COVID rally. I mean, we all expected the budget to be broke because of no sales tax. And we had the biggest rally in record for our COVID rally. I mean, it was by far, in my opinion, the largest number of people in the rally we had. Just massive.
Other discussion on first reading this supplemental appropriation, public or council?
I would move to approve the first supplemental appropriation of twenty twenty two, this budget ordinance, which is twenty twenty two dash oh three.
Got a first by Dave. Got a second by Becca. More discussion. We'll go ahead and roll call. Becca, we'll start with you. Dean.
Yes.
Aaron. Um, yes, Kevin.
Yes.
Angela. Dave.
Yes.
And Mike.
Yes.
First reading passes unanimously. Item eleven point four is also a first or first reading here for more title fifteen and more sidewalk discussion. And Mr. Miller, back to you, sir.
The provisions to section fifteen point oh six addressing sidewalk cafes and sidewalk vendors originated through actual discussion for the food truck ordinance on how to reconcile these two ordinances. As the last council meeting, it became apparent that additional revisions beyond just reconciliation is necessary. And with that, there's pretty significant revisions to this version than there was at the discussion. The primary revisions are that the originally the sidewalk cafes had an applicability provision that had the temporary vendor ordinance applicable between July fifteenth and August twentieth. That was removed out of this version with the purpose of having this ordinance regulate sidewalk cafes all year long, including during the rally. And the primary purpose of that is because there's a quite a bit of a difference between, say, food food trucks versus sidewalk cafes and even just temporary vendors in general with sidewalk cafes. So it seemed apparent that removing the applicability was necessary. The next revision was adding in a provision into the appeal section that allows the city to waive the any appeal filing fees. Because I think in this one, it's a hundred dollars for an appeal filing fee. However, if the appellant can show hardship or inability to pay, the city has the ability to waive that. That way it kind of broadens the possibility of some of appeals. And then one of the large revisions to this version is that the sidewalk vendor is completely repealed or struck. And the purpose of that is through the discussion on January third, it became apparent that this provision is hasn't really been active over the years. So it just seems it's just there. So in order to streamline the ordinance and reduce regulation, unnecessary regulations, the city recommends striking or repealing that section. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Eric, I got a question for you. With that appellate process and broadening the terms of the hundred dollar fee to do it, whose purview does that lie in? Is that upper level staff within city hall? Is that a council decision? How's that laid out? I can't remember.
Right now, the appeal is generally ran through the city manager or I think, believe it, city manager in this provision. And ultimately, the they would pay that the peel filing fee essentially to the finance office. So it's more of an administrative decision to whether or not to waive that. So one option is, and these provisions are pretty standard throughout much of the entire code. So one option to make it uniform would be potentially passing a resolution to essentially grant the administrative portion of the city the ability to waive those fees if needed.
Okay. Any other council or public discussion? This is our second swing at this first reading, right, on this one? It's hard to keep track on these. We've been doing a lot of ordinances, but significant changes for is why I brought back his first reading. The question is from Bonnie about who in particular would be impacted by this. Shops on Main Street that set up extend part of their dining room or part of their, yeah, operations out onto basic public right of ways. Is that a fair statement, Eric?
Yeah, on a portion of the sidewalk.
Correct, correct. With Domino's in particular, they built that structure with a setback to have that done. It's not within the right of way. I can't think of any in particular off of the main street that would fall. The main thing that goes over top of all this is the ADA. We have to have enough space for the ADA to get through. So that's where most of the places it works is on the larger sidewalk built on Main Street. Other discussion on first reading? Is there emotion?
Move to approve?
Move first by Jason.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any last discussion? This will come back for a second reading at the next meeting, I believe, unless there's some voted down and then we have to start over. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, opposed to no? That motion carries unanimous favor. The roll call, please. Brings us to the first step in the process of our ordinance review, which is discussion. This is of title thirty two of animals. Turn it back over to you, Mr. Miller, for staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recently, the there's been, city's been working to clean up any outstanding administrative citations for dog at large tickets and various dog offenses. During that process, the city has filed numerous complaints in magistrate court to further enforce these ordinances. In that process, it became apparent that the there's a fee or kind of a fine discrepancy between the actual kind of schedule of fines that the court commonly uses with the city's current setup for administrative fines and fees. And the primary concern is the administrative fees are substantially higher than the common schedule that the courts put together. So the purpose of the revisions to the animal ordinance is to essentially lower the penalties for first offense, second offense, third offense, dog at large tickets or different animal violations with the intent of trying to incentivize paying the administrative citation rather than taking any issues to court and addressing it through those means. So the recommend or the revisions change the penalties from a hundred, rather than a hundred dollars, which is for first violation to seventy five dollars. The second violation from two hundred dollars to one hundred dollars. And a third violation, all within a rolling twelve month period, from three hundred dollars to a hundred and forty dollars. This is more in line with the generally the fourth circuit's schedule of fines, which their fines are eighty seven fifty for first offense, a hundred and twelve fifty for a second offense, and generally a hundred and fifty seven fifty for a third offense. And normally, it's the presiding judge that'll put together or have sign off on the schedule of fines. And the purpose is to make it uniform throughout the entire circuit on these fines. So the city recommends changing, lowering these penalties to be more in line to essentially incentivize the paying the administrative citation rather than going through the court process. And I think that's a benefit for both the potential violators, but also for the city too, because it streamlines the process and kind of essentially keeps everything in house.
In the court system.
Yeah. And along with those revisions, there's a significant section that adds specific appeal process for these administrative citations for the dog at large tickets that allows, rather than trying to go through the court process, we can manage it in house on appeals too, with the ability of allowing the council to listen to any appeals and evidence related to the appeals and make a decision on whether to affirm it or reverse it. And another primary revision is generally the appeal process is based off of title thirty six for code enforcement. With the these appeals, the filing fee is substantially lower. The recommendation is to put it at thirty five dollars rather than the usual hundred. And the purpose of that is to, I mean, it is to balance the penalties versus the filing fee. While this may create a little bit more of a burden for a little bit more of a cost to the city itself, that this enables an easier appeal process for those that are want to appeal dog at large tickets and things of that sort. And primarily, I didn't, the revisions didn't go beyond addressing that penalty enforcement function. But I also included the whole ordinance just in case. We wanted to expand the scope of any sort of proposed revisions.
So Eric, just for clarity then, so really just two changes then. One is lower the price for for second or third offense. And then the second change is if there is, in terms of, you know, if they don't pay, how you handle that? Put it in administrative within the city versus some kind of court or the other external approach.
Because the normal process is if the the city will issue an administrative citation, if the person decide or opts not to pay that administrative citation, then we would file essentially a criminal complaint in magistrate court and pursue that those means.
Keep it more administrative versus criminal court?
Yes.
Okay.
I think these are all great moves to help the citizens out with their pets, you know, lowering the appeal fees. That's, I think that's really important that that we don't make it too overly burdensome on any of our appeals to to actually try and sort it out. And by lowering the the fees, hopefully, we keep more animals out of the shelter and, you know, don't have a crunch for space there. So good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
I I also noticed, you know, from a standpoint of how this is worded, it says may issue administrative citation. So I'm kind of guessing and maybe Jody and probably this is already done, but like if there's some dog out there and it and it's never been out on the loose before and it's got his tags on and everything and it's a matter of just walking it a house away, you know, I would, I would kind of wonder if that would be one of those cases where you just walk the dog over and say, don't ever let this this happen again, rather than.
To kind of answer your question, usually unless it's a notoriously getting out after multiple times of warning, then that's when we start the administrative citation, I would say. First couple of times, we usually give them warnings. And with the current system, I would say probably ninety percent of the people that we were giving administrative citations to were not paying in the first place. So we're trying to help them stay in compliance as well as all the other stuff. And I I agree with the changes and I think it's going to be more beneficial to us as a as a city, so.
Okay, thank you, Jody. I I just wanted to bring that up because I figured that's probably how it was handled.
Any other discussion on proposed changes to title thirty two? This one, we have a little bit of time to decipher and read. You got your hand up over there, Bonnie? Yep, definitions are within the ordinance. So so the reds are the revisions on that. The ones that remain black are the existing title thirty two, Bonnie.
And then at the end, there's also an additional form of the ordinance, which is generally a cleaned up version. So that's with all the revisions added into it. That way it's a little easier to read a cleaned up version. So there's two different versions that are usually attached to these reports.
Yeah, and I'm, I struggle with, can I just have you look at this and see if I'm looking at the right view? Because I don't want to waste time if it doesn't, if it's not real. Okay, look at this definition here of kennel. See, I could be in the whole wrong document.
I think you're in the right one.
It's going to take a little time to get used to the new system. Oh, for for us too, Bonnie, not just you.
Should be in the same one.
It's all ours, a hundred percent documentation.
This is any person or corporation engaged in the business, engaged in the business. Or owning two or more breeding animals. Does this exclude individuals not in business? And what about the individual that? And what about the individual that breeds their pets from time to time and says they have puppies? Is that in the business?
I can look into, because a lot of this, especially like that definition of kennel. Yeah, that's from a previous ordinance, so I can look further into that.
So, I mean, if you read the English way, it's right. That's what you're saying, you have to be established in business for this to impact you? And I don't know what you're trying to give a handle on.
It runs in cycles.
Is that an individual?
Oh, near me.
So an individual, when this was discussed, that was putting that specifically.
They're never mine, let me tell you.
Pairs, then they would have to apply, but if the individual has one pair that they breed, then it does not apply.
Okay, so you're saying two or more pair?
Correct. Two or more breeding animals. So if you have one, it doesn't apply to you.
So to summarize here the discussion, Mr. Miller, can you?
But that's not what it says. It says only two or more breeding animals, it doesn't say pairs. So if you have a male and a female, you have two breeding animals.
So, two or more breeding animals. And so if you have one, if you have a male or a female that you use for breeding, then it doesn't count. But if you have two females and you find others to breed with, then it counts. Or if you have one of each, then it counts.
Okay, and, and the implication here is that you?
Yeah.
The reference here is people operating as a business, and so it's not clear that, hey, you individuals that are doing this as well, this applies to you. So I, I mean, I'm just questioning what the English is saying. I know what you think it says, and I know what you mean by to say. But I'm saying that you won't be able to say that.
Here, Bonnie, I'm going to have you talk into the microphone so we catch us for the record for the discussion. So we're in the definitions portion on rabies.
It doesn't, it doesn't make it clear that this applies also to individuals who do not see themselves operating as a business, as a kennel, as a keeper of animals or as a support group. But individuals who breed animals are also impacted by this.
Correct, if they have more than one, yep.
That's not what it really says. And then the other one is this, the rabies one, the N is missing on any animal known.
Sounds good. Do you know what section that is?
Yeah, thirty-two oh one oh two, exposed to rabies.
Thank you.
So as we go through the process, this is the discussion point. Mr. Miller's tasked with bringing forward a first reading at some point in time in the near future that covers all these. We do try to discuss these through the process with legal and finance also. But I guess at this point, I'd like to, there is no action necessary on this. But if there are concerns, questions, comments as you read Title 32, please contact Eric or Mr. Marshall or council member or myself, and please bring them forward. Again, in the process, we will have a first reading in the near future, which is also open to the public for discussion and molding of this ordinance.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Angela.
Since we're on Title 32 and it's a discussion, I'm not sure if now would be the time to bring it up, but I don't want anyone throwing tomatoes at me. Chickens, chickens are animals. Would now, if we're doing revisions to Title 32, would now be the time to consider something like allowing egg-laying hens, no roosters, a way to put some kind of, hey, don't start throwing tomatoes.
Just, just from former councils, everything, what you run into is they get loose, and then next thing you know, the dog is eating one, and it's not a great, yeah, situation to have. And then there's odor, odors and noise.
More than dogs, more than barking dogs, more than vicious dogs, more than bees that could kill someone that has allergies, I mean, so.
This would be, this is, this is the spot to bring it up, Angela.
Just a discussion, I don't know, maybe I have a minority.
We've had these discussions, and I think 2015, it came up, and I mean, it was, it was interesting. So thanks for opening that can back up.
I guess I wasn't part of it.
On the record, if this, get over here, we had people writing and debating ordinances so they could sell their property. How many cows can I have? What type of wire do I have to put up? How many chickens can I have? How many rabbits can I have? I mean, it's like, they, they wanted to, it, it was unbelievable. That went on for three weeks.
But, yeah.
In my mind, I just don't see chickens as being, if there's a limit placed on them. I, I don't see how chickens are worse than something like bees that can be dangerous to people, and we, yet we allow bees and barking dogs. And I mean, I'd rather have a neighbor that has, you know, a few chickens than a neighbor whose dog is barking at me in my yard, whose dog messes right along the property line.
Until the dogs eat the chicken.
Oh, that could happen. I don't know.
Well.
I just thought I would bring it up.
Might have to have some alternate language, Mr. Miller. I, I don't know where that falls on support across the council or across the community, but part of the discussion. Yeah, it could get interesting. Thanks, Angela.
Something in here about exotic?
There, there is some language that was included in those previous discussions about exotic birds not allowed, and.
Doesn't this one have something in here about keeping a wild animal or a, I thought I saw something.
There is, yep, yep.
But I don't know where it was.
This is Becca. I would like to say that I'm, I'm in concurrence with Angela about having a discussion around chickens at some point. You know, this has been a topic in other communities, such as Rapid City. And I think if you kept it to just, like, laying hens or something, and you limited the amount that people had, I don't know if you'd want to go as far as making people register their hens, but I mean, I think that it would be a worthwhile discussion.
Well, we're having it.
Oh, and now, okay.
Well, I mean, and it could come back up through first, I, I think the language has to be key there. And I think there has to be some direction if there's councils wish to push that. How about any other discussions, non-chicken discussions to Title 32 at this point?
Did you find out about the fowl?
Yeah, fowl is prohibited.
Fowl is prohibited, but it was something that said, it didn't even use the word exotic. It used like wild or.
An exotic chicken?
It could.
Some people argued one time, told us they were exotic. So that's very, yeah. We'll have a chat, Angela. We'll have a chat. I can tell you all kinds of bad things.
It can't be worse than that, because it can't be any worse.
It's what comes with chickens.
How about anything else for direction on possible first reading material for Mr. Miller?
Add chickens?
Max, what do you have, sir? Come on up to the microphone. Yep, we can have, we can have both. Come on up, Max.
Hey, I just, on a side note, wanted to let you all know my quails just had eggs, and I've been having one a day. Man, they're tasty.
Lives in Pleasant Valley. Yep.
Can we expect predatory flyers coming in now for the quails? Hawks?
More than normal?
Owls, eagles?
Vultures?
Vultures.
Yep. Well, we'll have some alternate language there, and we'll see what develops, but good discussion for sure. Anything else to add before we move on? No action needed on this. Item eleven point six is a Resolution 2022 dash thirteen. This is a resolution in support of the Office of City Manager. I brought this forward, I thought it was important to kind of just look back in what this town and how we've evolved over the years. I mean, no disrespect to myself or anybody up here, but we're not trained professionals in managing and running a city as far as the day in and day out activities. And I think part of our success over the years is because we've had an Office of City Manager within our organization, and can set, council can set parameters and plans and future goals that are reached by both, all, all staff members of the City of Sturgis. So I think it was important to put this on paper. I do know there's been some discussions that I've had with some council members, but I'll end my staff report there, and I'll turn it over for discussion or motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Forster.
I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-13 with editing of the last paragraph. I'd like the last paragraph to read. Therefore, is resolved, is hereby resolved by the Sturgis Common Council to strongly affirm its support and its use of the Office of City Manager within its municipal organizational staff, and to establish an Office of City Manager Subcommittee made up of one counselor from each ward, appointed by action of the Sturgis Common Council. The Sturgis City Attorney will provide the Office of City Manager Subcommittee a report that outlines the current general powers and authority given to the Office of City Manager through South Dakota codified laws and City of Sturgis ordinances. The Sturgis Common Council will schedule a special meeting to discuss publicly the Office of City Manager position, general powers, and authority. The Office of City Manager Subcommittee will provide for consideration to the Sturgis Common Council changes to any City of Sturgis ordinances that contain reference to the Office of City Manager position, general powers, and authority.
So we got a first by Kevin with some additional language. Is there a second? We have a second by Becca. I certainly opened it up for discussion from council. I'm with the addition, go ahead, Aaron.
You know, I guess it, kind of addressing more the people here in the room or, or listening. You know, if you read through this, if you had an opportunity to read through this resolution on the website, you know, part of it talks about, you know, the benefits of having a, you know, a professional competent person help us kind of administer, manage the city. Doesn't necessarily get into what some of the things that, some of the problems. We've all been having conversations with people in the community, and part of those conversations is listening. So what Counselor Forster talked about with the Subcommittee is really kind of a recognition that, you know, status quo is probably not where we want to stay. When it comes particularly to kind of looking at, understanding through law what the authority and powers of a city manager is at office, and then understanding that, and then also, you know, looking at it and making recommendations to the rest of the council on some of those things that we'd rather move from authority of the Office of the City of Manager over to the City Council. So the Subcommittee would look at all that, make some recommendations. We'd, as you kind of pointed out, there would be a, a public hearing to be able to get feedback, you know, from people in our community. So this resolution does basically two things. It recognizes, and when I say two things, that's when I've talked to people, and, and I can't really speak for everybody in the council, but I've talked to a lot of them, and I think they've had some shared experiences, is when, when we talk to people and we're listening, there's a lot of people say, hey, there's a lot of good things that, that this community has reaped over the last, you know, ten years or so, and we should be communicating, you know, a lot of those things. And this resolution does that. But also listening to people, there are things that we need to probably make some adjustments, and having, you know, some of those authority, or some of those powers and authorities moved over to the City Council that's more directly responsible to the people and having their voices being heard. And so this is a good process to be able to, you know, analyze that, make some recommendations, get feedback continues from the, from the people in our, in our community. So we are just one community. So in that regards, I, you know, I think that's a, it's up in the right direction, and I'm glad to see that, you know, this opportunity and time that we're kind of capitalizing on it.
Thanks, Aaron.
I'd just like to make a few comments, and, and I agree with everything that's been said so far. And certainly, we want to keep listening to the public all the time. And then the other thing we want to have happen is the listening goes both ways. So we want to make sure that the public is really listening to us and what we're saying, and what the comments we're making, and the information we give to them. Because there are occasions, and I'm not trying to, to offend anyone, but I think sometimes the public does not always, they're, they're not always cognizant of all the information that's out there. And so I think the listening goes both ways. And I would also say this, on this resolution in support of the Office of City Manager, there's a lot of things that, and I think you did a great job on this mark as far as listing things. And I, I think it would be very helpful if everybody in the entire community would also take some time to read this entire resolution and all the positive things that happened, have happened in the city all during the time that we've had a city manager, since the inception of having a city manager. That's all I've got to say.
Thanks, Dave. Certainly.
I'm going to push some of this back to Daniel. A lot of us have management degrees, business degrees. None of us have municipal government attachments to our degrees. What makes yours so much more special is what we need to get to the public. What makes you better than me? And I'm telling you, we had this discussion nine years ago about right now, and I was wrong. I was wrong. No way in hell could I do his job, period.
Thanks, Mike. Other discussion? You can have, I got one right here, yep, I got, Mike's got one too.
I even highlighted it for you.
We're prepared on that, because we want accurate. Any other discussion on this resolution, public or council? Call me, Bonnie. I'll listen. Bernie's coming up anyway, she's buying you some time.
Bernie, you're Sarah, and I'm here to say that I am very, very happy about this resolution. It's been long overdue. We cannot run this city without a city manager. And you're, Mike, you're right. The information that you have, the talents that you have, I'm glad you paid attention in college. And it's just, it's amazing how far this town has come with this type of having the city manager and a very, we need a very active city council as well. And I applaud you all those that put in that extra time. Are we perfect? No, but I think we are so much further ahead. And you're right, Mike, absolutely.
I'll make another point for you, Bernie, then you can tear me up. Past councils, not necessarily this one, past councils let him down, and I was part of that. What I'm saying is, had we been more proactive, had we known the difference? What I'm saying is, had we been more proactive, had we known the difference between him and me or him and somebody else, we wouldn't be listening to this garbage now.
And I think that's part of what this resolution brings forward, Mike, is, is a plan to say, council, this is, this is the direction, this is the clarity, this is where we're going to codify some of it if it comes out that way. I mean, it just puts a lot, it puts the roadmap on paper and just brings clarity to the whole situation. I mean, I've been a part of this for six months before Daniel got here. And the bottom line is, is city councils, all the different ones I've been a part of has always been the boss of Daniel. It's just how active is that city council in the process of executing things? And without a professional, trained, smart person like Mr. Ainsley in the Office of City Manager, the execution would not occur, which has occurred over the years and changed our town to what it is. It went from a town that didn't have too much to, we have quite a bit now and we're trying to make it better yet. So it's, it's, it's all well deserved for sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bernie. Other discussion on the amended resolution. We have a first and a second on the floor. Come on up, Bonnie. Well, I know you're a speed reader, so.
Well, it helped that he had some of it highlighted, but no, I just want to say, I think it's pretty obvious what we're up against, what you're up against as a council, what we're up against as a town. And I think there's some credence in my support because it's obvious, it's apparent and it's historical. Dan and I don't always see eye to eye on things. And we have terse words sometimes. And I don't, I don't ever expect a conversion. What I need is the cue that you got me, you got what I mean. You don't have to agree with me. I just need to know that I've been understood. And I can look just over the time that I've been coming to meetings and fussing and correcting grammar and not wanting to come to the mic, but wanting to speak. And I, I too believe that Dan himself, but if we had another city manager, that city manager would have established a similar pattern. I would hope that we would hire somebody with the same sort of ilk and credential. But I don't think enough of us know enough about the tools, the skill sets, the specific knowledge that Dan uses to get us where we are. And I look at what you wrote and I read some things in there like the bike path. Well, we were working on the bike path forever and ever and ever, one little square concrete at a time because we really didn't know how to do those grant things, those joint funding things. You know, Dan really knows that stuff and that's what any city, city manager should know. We happen to have one who's really knowledgeable about those things. And when I stop and think, see, I get real scared about the, all of the things that are stacked on each other and the grants. And this one's coming in at this time and that'll come at that time and this will happen before that comes. I can't keep track of that. I mean, I'm having trouble getting the cats fed, you know, I'd so. But I do understand that you are keeping track of that. And again, we don't always agree. And the people in the community are not always going to agree. But I think I come here and hear the firsthand enough that I get it. I'm not always sure about it because even when I've just heard it, I can't go back and fill in the blank spaces. It's not my area of expertise. I think we do need to work on communication within the council, within the community, among counselors and community individuals. I think you can only do so much with public announcements and telling everybody the same thing. I think we have to work harder at building relationships with the people you represent. And just because I have a conversation with you doesn't mean you're going to go to the next council meeting and vote, vote my voice. I understand that too. But I do expect my council members to vote the combined voice of their constituents, not their voice necessarily. And, and I have heard, and I can't tell you when, don't ask me for history, I'm not a historian, but I have heard individual counselors say, this is not my vote, but I have to represent my people. And this is, so I'm voting this way on it. And, uh, I, I think we're solving the wrong problem. And I think the effort to have a referendum is solving the wrong problem. And I don't think that the forces behind that are understanding what their problem is, even though it's theirs, bringing it forward. And so I think it, I think we have to do a lot more communicating and, and get from our public, what is the, what is the root of the dissatisfaction? It's not all of us and we don't know if it's a majority of us. I wasn't big on the city manager thing when it first made that shift. And I don't even know, when was that?
Oh, seven was when the vote was.
Okay, I was doing my third journal then, you know, so yeah, I was, my head was other places. I wasn't paying atta-, I wasn't entertaining Shirley yet. You know, that's why we started coming because she could do nothing but criticize every move the council made. And I couldn't even counter her because I didn't know right or wrong what was, you know, so.
And that, and I think that's the purpose of this resolution and the future actions of council, which we refer to by Councilman Forrester and Jordan, is, you know, the City of Sturgis has been at this for a while and we have a lot of things right, but we can still do better. And how we do that is listen. We change some processes, we codify some things in ordinance if we so choose. There, there's some things we can do to help bring clarity and perceptions will be changed on what the city council and what direction is given to the Office of City Managers. So change isn't always a bad thing and we can make good things better and that's what we're trying to do.
Well, and I think anytime you're working with a dynamic personality in any position and even just me wandering around the community as a no man, that generates static and disagreement sometimes. And Dan is a dynamic personality and a very knowledgeable. And I'm too, I'm glad you listened in your college classes because they're helping. And you, and you continue, you continue your education. You didn't walk in here knowing all you know. You've learned a lot doing this for us as well. But I think, you know, your ability to manage the finances, to ferret out the, the grant options and loan options and whatever else they are is pretty amazing. And again, we don't always agree. We don't always see eye to eye, but I am often looking at a very focus point that matters to me and matters to people around us when you are keeping the whole big thing afloat. So Bonnie, what does that matter? But.
Yeah, Bonnie, I'd like to respond to, one of the things that you said is, you kind of made the comment that, you know, we're working on the, the wrong problem. We're, you know, and regardless of what I think, representing people that I represent don't necessarily feel like that's the wrong problem. That, and it's really not about the personalities, not about Daniel. From the conversations and just listening to people, it's more about just the office of the position and the, the powers and the authority that's vested in that position, you know, vis a vis the elected officials. And those are things that they were concerned about and that's what the Subcommittee is going to take a look at. I don't expect wholesale changes. I think, I think there's a, a middle way. But I do believe there's, for any community, there's, it's good to have a little tension between the Office of a City Manager and the elected officials. You know, that person's an apolitical person trying to be effective, efficient, productive. You know, it's not looking at politics. It's just looking at doing the things the right way based on their experiences. We, on the other hand, represent people that are more emotional or have different objectives and we're trying to find that middle ground. So there has to be a little tension there to be able to make that work effectively for people can have a voice and feel like not only do I have a voice, but somebody's listening to me. And so again, the, the resolution and particularly is, uh, Mark and Kevin pointed out there and that Subcommittee is to be able to look at that. And try to create a, you know, effective tension there that allows the city, the office of that, that position to be successful and help us continue having all the success that we've had over the last many years. But also improve maybe at least if anything, the optics of people having a voice, talking to the council and be able to feel like, uh, you know, we're the ones that they're most accounted for, you know, counted to. So to me, I think it's a good, good, but I do want to recognize all those other voices out there that don't necessarily, you know, this petition knows a problem. And again, it wasn't necessarily about the personality. It's just about trying to find a fine tune there to make it a little bit better. And I think that's what we're trying to do right now.
Well, and I think that proposal is a good place to start with it. The fact of the matter is, there's factual reality and there's perceptual reality. And I think we have to work on the perception.
And then there's the science, Bonnie.
I, I think people are not close enough to it to understand the factual reality and that's where.
I agree. Yep. And that's what we're trying to change here as, yep, so appreciate it.
And I wish more people would fill those chairs.
Right.
And have guts enough to speak.
Agreed.
And you have no idea how many times and how close I came to throwing up the first year that I started to listen to you and started to ask for more understanding. It was not easy and it's not easy for the other folks out there either. And the more other people do, the less I do. But when you ask for discussion and nobody comes forward, you know, you get one person comes forward for discussion and it's like, it's like there are no ideas and there's no sense of it out there, but there is, there is. And I appreciate what you guys are doing to rise to it. And I do appreciate what Dan has done and is doing. And again, there's something to be said for someone having the history. And when he can say, yeah, Bonnie, we talked about that in 2019. So.
Thanks, Bonnie. We have a first and a second on the floor for an amended resolution. Is there any last discussion? None being heard. All those in favor of the amended resolution, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, the no. The resolution passes unanimously. Brings us to item 12, other matters that come before the council, non-agenda items. Brought forward for a brief amount of time for discussion. Does council have anything to add for tonight? Go ahead, Aaron.
Hey, this is an update, uh, to our last regular meeting and really a question from Bonnie, uh, when she was talking about the recycling. And, um, you know, having got everything worked out, I've been working with Rick and a lot of his sanitation folks. And, you know, there's a couple of things out there. One, you know, looking at the trailers, we feel pretty confident that we have the right number. They do empty those things every day, uh, at least throughout the week. And so, so far they, they feel pretty confident that they're able to stay on top of not having stuff, you know, sticking out the sides and there's room for it. Right, right. Now there's, but some things we can do better is signage, uh, educating the, the population. Sometimes people use that as a rubble site and that makes, that really puts a challenge on our sanitation folks. Because they're not necessarily, they're going up there to do the recycling and they got to pick up, you know, doors, sometimes couches. We also have people from outside the community that using it, uh, prob-, I'm not sure to what extent, probably on the weekends. So I'm working with, again, with Rick and sanitation guys, kind of brainstorming some ideas and what we can do to help educate people. You know, we know we're never going to get everybody, but if we can get, you know, in terms of what goes in there, uh, what condition it is, like a cardboard, you know, we have a lot of cardboard that goes up there that has all the, uh, the shiny stuff, uh, you know, packaged material. But we can't, uh, recycle those things. So they have to go through and spend time picking through and take the stuff they can recycle, the stuff they can't recycle. Again, it goes back down to education. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on that, Bonnie. We're still working it. Uh, I think we, uh, I'm, I'm, you know, it's just doing some research. Not every community has a recycling program. So I really tip my hat to the council and, and the city putting this in place, uh, you know, a while before. But there's opportunities to, to continue to improve that program. So thanks again. The wind? We're going to build a big wall.
Thanks, Aaron. Anything else from council for other matters? How about public, anything for other matters? I want to make the executive decision that there's no executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn? We got a first by Dave and a second by Mike. All those in favor to adjourn, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, the no.
We're adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.